Six thirty, I will call the meeting to order and we will start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May please have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you Heather, is there support?
Support.
Thank you for all the support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. And with that, I will turn it over to Adam for our new certified staff candidate introductions.
Thank you very much Danielle. We have a couple tonight. I first have Ashley LaCuro. She is recently hired as a fifth grade teacher at Paint Creek Elementary. She earned her bachelor's degree from Oakland University and is coming to us after previous teaching experience at Reach Charter Academy. Her ties to Dragon Country run quite deep. She is a proud Dragon alum, class of 2008. She began her educational journey here in Lake Orion, student teaching under Jess LaGro at Orion Oaks Elementary. And she currently lives in the community and her two children attend ECC in Stadium Drive Elementary. So, we are very excited to welcome Ashley in this capacity to the Dragon family.
Awesome.
And next up, we have Chad Chapel. He is being recommended tonight as our district career-focused education, or CFE supervisor. Chad earned his bachelor's degree from Michigan State University and his master's degree from OU. He previously worked as a campus operations supervisor, or assistant principal, at the Oakland Schools Technical Campus Northwest in Clarkston, and also as a dean of students for Brandon Schools. His knowledge and experience in the field and leading all things related to career-focused education will be a great asset to the district. And we are very excited to have him leading this charge for Lake Orion. We are officially, we are happy to officially welcome him as a Dragon tonight.
Awesome, thank you.
And both Chad and Ashley, we have a thrilling agenda planned for this evening, but, at this point, the two of you are able to leave the meeting if you'd like and go enjoy the rest of your night, celebrate, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here though. High school's out too. Alright, it's always exciting to welcome people home and new, new into the district, so. And with that, we will turn to learning highlights and communications update.
Thank you Danielle. We've been off to a great start this year. Everything's been going well, so just get right to it. Thank you. Not the arrow. Use the quicker. There we go. Okay, so first band and choir concert of the year was held last night and it was very successful. Mr. Steele said it was a great night. And everyone really enjoyed seeing it. We always talk about the great talents of our students and it's great to have them on display. It's early in the season, but early in the school year, but they're all ready to go already, so that's awesome. This was one of the coolest things that happened so far this school year. Mr. Anderson's class at the high school in the special education wing, they had talked about wanting to appreciate the bus drivers who do so much for us, for them. So what they did is they did this for all bus drivers that came to the school. They made these little packets. They spent a long time making these little bags. And they had these little notes that said thank you and everything. And Heidi and I were there and we watched them and they had so much joy giving them. Obviously, the bus drivers were very appreciative, but they would climb on the bus and they handed them over. And Eric Mearschard's class actually, they didn't create, upgrade the bags, but they wanted to hand them out too. So they went outside and they were helping as well. So that was kind of a really fun thing that we were doing. We saw them doing. The horse, if you remember last year, it came to Stadium Drive Elementary and it returned again this year, early in the year. And the students were really involved and engaged. Drew, you were there. Was it, it was an exciting afternoon, huh?
It's one of my favorite afternoons of the whole year. It was, yeah, it's, it's really cool. But what is really cool about that is there's a whole presentation. The owners have told history through the lens of a horse. And I learned a lot. I was there for a good half hour, forty-five minutes. So it was, yeah, it was great. Sorry, I get very excited about the horse.
Drew, we have talked about.
I know, I'm sorry.
The cycling team is, is one of those sports that doesn't get as much attention, you know, within our district, but they're really successful. And in the fall, they have six races. And they actually, the high school group, and it's through all levels, you know, participate, even from our youngest students all the way up through the high school. And the high school group finished in first place at a race at Twin Plague, Twin Lakes, Michigan last month. So as I said, there's six races each fall and the final race will be this weekend in Adrian. So we're very proud of them and their success. The Oakview Choir, they had Frozen Junior last year, but they raised money and they donated over a thousand dollars to Oxford and Orion Fish Pantry. And that was really, you know, something that they did this fall and it's obviously greatly appreciated for people who need it. There've been a number of different runs that have happened and they're all happening in the fall here at the beginning to raise money for the PTO to spend throughout the year. At Oakview, they raised nine thousand dollars, which is quite a sum for middle school. Where there's not as much engagement at the middle school level with the PTOs and with parents and stuff. So it's, that's really an achievement. Paint Creek had their Warrior Dash and that was exciting. That was one of the first ones. And Carpenter had their Dash and they raised over twenty-five thousand dollars. So they're doing really well and they can have a lot of opportunities throughout the year, which was exciting. This is something that it was started with previously. Kim McCool, who was the previous gym teacher, phys ed teacher at Scripps. But with the bikes and having all the Scripps kids, right, you may see them if you're ever over there, riding their bikes around the, you know, around the campus and everything like that. And now Scott Cox, who is the phys ed teacher now, has continued that because they've got all these bikes and he's, you can see, he's helping the kids learn and everything. And the kids are really engaged. They, this is when they're practicing in the gym and I think once they get more comfortable, they go outside and everything like that. So that was kind of fun. We, we didn't touch this last time, but this is one of the new sports that we have this year is the flag football team, the girls' flag football team at Lake Orion High School. And there were only, in Oakland County, there were only five schools that did it, I think. So they played four games. And we won them all by large margins every time. We have a dominant team. We had, there was so much interest. I think there were fifty who tried out and they could only take forty. And I think that they have to find a way to, you know, get these girls an opportunity to play. So maybe there'll be more if there's more interest across the county next year. They can have multiple teams or something. But tonight, they're going to have some who win and some who lose because they're playing each other. So tonight is the green and white, the first green and white game. And that's happening at seven o'clock tonight. So that's kind of exciting for them. They were all excited about that and everything. So that's really special that they've done that. Matthew Smith, who's our choir teacher, won an award, the 2026 TTVB State Honor Choir Director for Michigan Schools Vocal Music Association. And I said, what does TTVB mean? Tenors and basses, tenors one and two, and basses one and two. So it's really a great honor. They had posted about him receiving it. And so I reached out to him and talked to him about it and he feels very, you know, honored that they found him and that they chose him for this award this year. So that's, he will direct this choir in 2026. This National Merit with, we have some commended students, Nicholas M., David P. and Benjamin S. in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Dr. Haas and Anthony Kiner were here and they've helped guide that program and really enhanced the standardized testing success of our students. And that's really encouraging. So we want to be proud of that. Lamp of Learning, many of you were, were there and you saw kind of what happened in the first edition, which was the Lamp of Learning. And for high school and for Scripps, and then Oakview and Walden are to come. And I thank Drew for being the model in the back of all the pictures. So all these, all these families have drew up on their wall now, so, which is awesome. And this last Sunday, the fire station had an open house for the community. There were a lot of students there. There were students, I talked to a lot of students who were in the ECC and in elementary schools and it was a great day and there was all these opportunities. And we had a high school student who was there participating. We won't say what he was doing, but it was, his name's Adam and it was really great of him to, you know, step into that role. And he was enjoying engaging with the kids and everything like that. So that was really, you know, obviously, we talk about the community and our relationship with all the community partners. And I've gotten a number of contacts from the fire, fire staff this week. I think three or four of them have reached out saying how much they appreciated the Dragon being there. And that connection that we have with them. And it's a great support. So we're glad for that. And then finally, you know, away from the games on the field, but we really, I wanted to acknowledge, you know, now we've had, we only have one more home football game this year. But it's such an event and sometimes you go to other schools, it's not quite the same. I mean, and they don't have all of these other people who are involved from the whole community. And you notice that we have the youth cheer, we have the youth football players that are at one game. We, the band, obviously, at every game. You know, the student section is amazing and they're engaged and they have the painted boys in the front and they all do the themes. They go on the road and everything in large numbers, you know, more than other schools do. So it really is something that should be acknowledged that it's, it's a community event and we're really proud that it's not just about the football game. It's about everything involved with the community. So I wanted to make sure we recognize that before the end of the season. So, any questions?
Any questions or comments from Mark?
Thank you. I gotta agree, agree with a guy at work that his kid plays for Clarkston and he came up to me on Monday and he goes, "My gosh, you know, like, your team, despite not having, your stands were full." He's like, "I've never seen the visitor stands that full." So it just shows like the community involvement and the pride. It's win or lose, it's just supporting the kids in whatever they're doing.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Heidi to introduce our presentation this evening.
Yes, this evening, we have Mitch here from GMB. He is an architect. And he is going to show us the design for the team rooms, otherwise known as the locker rooms, that we are replacing at CIRK. And this is part of the 2018 bond. So this project will start this spring. So Mitch, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you Heidi. And thanks to all of you for taking some time tonight to let me share this design with you as part of the meeting. As Heidi said, the, the project we're going to talk about is specifically about the team building and also the, the campus connection drive right next to it. But before we dive into the details of that, I think it makes sense to take a little bit of a step back and think about the high school master plan overall. That we've been working to implement as a part of the 2018 bond. So you can see how this kind of fits into that big overall puzzle. As part of the goals from the 2018 bond for the high school campus and that, that main campus overall, there were some big picture things around reducing congestion, around improving pedestrian safety and improving some of the aged facilities that are on that campus and making them more functional and more, more current. And so I'll shift to the overall image, just for reference here. Some of the things we've done towards that already, right? We're moving the ECC off this campus earlier in the bond, getting that congestion off the site. Improving traffic flow around Stadium Drive Elementary School, improving traffic flow and the entry experience around Scripps Middle School. Those are some of the early steps. And now what we're doing with this next project is kind of moving our way up the campus a little bit and working to improve some of the things around CIRK and the flow there. And that's the next step in even more things to come, hopefully, with this bond and potentially the 2025 bond as well. This is an overview of that master plan as it currently sits. There's always tweaks and changes to this as we get into the projects, but this is kind of the vision we've been working towards over the past seven years now, it seems like. And I will reference back to this if we have any big picture questions. But really, what we want to focus on tonight is the area highlighted here on the screen, which is the, the scope of this current project. Big picture wise, it is the new team building as called out. And then also that drive connection across the middle of the campus that hopefully helps pull some traffic away from the high school and also improves the Scripps drop-off experience as well. And if I can get my cursor to work here a little bit, maybe not. Yeah, it's kind of hard to see. It gets, it gets small. But this is the drive that's getting added that connects the two sides. And then here is the new team building highlighted here with, with some associated parking in this first phase. We'll zoom in and talk about the team building in a little bit. I guess any questions or comments on the overall drive? Big, big news here, as you can see, part of CIRK is no longer there. That's going to come down as part of this project. We're eliminating that gymnasium that's at CIRK. And we can do that because the gymnasium that we added at the high school is coming online. So again, this is that kind of jigsaw puzzle. Do one thing so we can do another aspect of this master plan.
Are you going to be covering this in more in depth, or is this a good time to ask questions?
This can be a great time to ask questions about the drive itself and then we'll jump into the team building after that.
So I just want to talk about some of the obvious things to me that I'm noticing, like, so the loop, the front, I'm going to gather, how do I start this? The front door is going to change, right? Because right now, when people go into CIRK, they're coming in the back door. Door eight, I want to say. I'm not sure what the, the numbers are. But that's going to transform to what it looks like over here where the bus loop is for the, and that's more for the students. And I'm assuming that's where everybody who would come into that building will enter. And hence, that's why that's changed.
Yes, so there's, there's obviously, we're, we're building out this loop to improve the Scripps drop-off experience. We moved that office up to the front, right? In anticipation of this. And this is kind of the completion of that project. But this will also help with students who are ever getting dropped off at CIRK as well. There are, there are more plans associated with CIRK coming in future phases. But for, for when this work is completed, yes, it will change where people enter that building.
And may I continue? So I've also, one of the things that I recall in previous discussions, like not like last week, like in previous years, we were looking for more parking in the, in the back behind CIRK. Is, can you talk about that in here?
Yeah, sure. So if I go back to my previous slide, if I don't mess up this screen here a little bit. Get rid of these. Get out of the, the full screen mode here for a sec. Alright, if I go back here, you can see there's a lot of parking coming, right? And so we have a lot of parking planned in this area in the future to support the stadium and other parking needs on the campus. So this is kind of showing all that future state parking.
Yes.
In the current, current phase, that's not all in yet, but it's coming.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So what is the timeline then? So you, so you're saying there'll be limited parking at first, right? Is that accurate? And then you're saying that the parking will come later, additional parking in this bond or?
As a part of this phase, the permanent parking that's getting constructed is immediately adjacent to the team building. There will be temporary parking areas in some of these green spaces around to support football and things in the coming fall. And then in future phases of the work is when the more permanent parking lots will be built. Any other questions on the overall drive before I zoom in a little?
That drive that's going, the, the drive that's going in and going across, that is the new, the new, it's the long-term drive. It's permanent.
Correct, that is permanent, yep.
I guess it's, it's tough because we flip between the future state and this. So to sort of see, if you could go back to the future state there, okay. Yeah, because we have that long lot now, if you could flip back. Okay, that one shortens. The tennis courts go in sort of where the Scripps people park now. The Scripps staff parks now. That's where the tennis courts will go. Okay. Just trying to get a feel for it.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I can go into as much detail as you want. I just didn't want to go too far, too fast.
And that drive, the, the long-term vision of what CIRK would be, where the entrance would be, if I recall, the entrance would be more east. Because the part of that building will get.
Kind of see, it's hard to see this little cursor, but that little sidewalk there is probably ultimately going to become the, the new front door to certain programs. So kind of on this north end of the building.
Okay, so that much of the building would.
Oh, I see, way back.
Would stay, okay.
Yeah, it is hard to see your cursor.
Is that just a better light or not?
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't work on the monitor, but. Yes, right there.
But that's eventual, that's not.
I think that's, I think it's important to.
Wing that we're seeing, that's the wing that just got renovated for, for phases. I mean, where they're at now?
Yeah.
Or are we one wing? I'm just trying to get the vision.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important to remember that this is, right, this is what we're thinking on the site plan. But there's a whole design that has to go into CIRK. So let's not go, let's not.
I just want to make sure we're not putting in a road that, that needs, that ends up being too far away.
That's why we're master, that's why we're master planning.
Is what connects to the building.
Yeah. No, that's why we're master planning. But I don't want to get into the whole CIRK building because we give you an idea there. But again, that has to go into a whole design phase.
Yes, sure.
Yes, we're, we're being very intentional in touching things we feel are safe to touch now that won't have to get moved in the future. And that, that kind of goes to kind of the strategic nature of, of what's getting touched now versus in the future. If we zoom in a little bit, this is a little bit larger in large view. So you can see the team room in relation to the soccer and football stadiums. The placement on the building, of the team building on the campus site was a big point of discussion through the design. The site where it's located now really allows it to support multiple sports. So it's not just going to serve events happening at the football and soccer fields. But it also provides the opportunity, as you'll see in the floor plan, with some public restrooms to support baseball, softball, and, and those future tennis courts as well. So positioning it here really helps, you know, support all of the athletics on the campus. And we zoom in a little farther to just see again how it's related to that initial parking area. You can see the stadium drive passing just to the north of it, the football stadium above, and then the team building below with, with the associated parking.
So you mentioned that there could also be use for the baseball and softball fields.
Correct.
There's still quite a ways from where this would be correct. It's, so currently, do they, do spectators typically, I guess, might be a question for, go inside our buildings to use restrooms and such right now? Like the, the one that's right by the field, right, the building there?
No, it's a porta potty.
Oh geez, okay.
But with the Ox Gym, the new Ox Gym, there will be restrooms there as well.
On the outside, right?
Yeah, so there will be multiple opportunities for restrooms instead of just the.
Yeah, just make it, make sense in my head.
We'll have the ones off by Ox Gym, but baseball is porta potties now. So this will be a big improvement to that.
Thank you.
So this zooms in a little farther into the layout of the building itself. A very straightforward rectangle shape to the building and, and very, you know, intentional functionality. So we have the, the main team rooms on each end of the building. The goal is separating the home and visitors as much as possible. So we avoid, you know, any, any conflict between kids on game day. Each has its own bathrooms. And again, those bathrooms, when there's not an event that would be using the team room, doors can be locked and other doors can be unlocked. And then those become public bathrooms for, you know, for the public to use during baseball or, or tennis events. There's a training room for a training staff and then also a small room for officials for all of those events as well. And then all of the, the space in the middle is really the support space, storage, you know, utility water heater, custodian, that kind of space for the building.
How many students are the, the two locker rooms look equal? So what is a, a comfortable capacity in there? I mean, there's fire code, but then there's comfortable capacity.
Yeah, we've, we've sized it to fit the varsity football team. So I, I think you can be upwards of eighty folks, you know, at halftime when that has to go in there. And again, these are intended to be like halftime team rooms. So this isn't where they're coming to get dressed. There's not lockers in these spaces. It's a spot for them to come in at halftime, sit down, talk with coaches, go to the bathroom if they need to. Can be a spot to get teams out of inclement weather if necessary during emergencies, that sort of thing. And then we get into some views of the exterior of the building. We're trying to mimic much of what's already happening at the stadium. So the green kind of metal wall panels and then that kind of stone base that's on the columns at the stadium. We're kind of mimicking those. So it feels a part of the stadium and game day atmosphere. Some nice Lake Orion Dragons signage for branding on it. Again, contributing to that, that atmosphere for people walking up to the stadium on game day. And then you can see on the side view by the Lake Orion home team doors, there'll be that Lake Orion logo as well. It's just a view of the back of the building and then the, the other side as well. And so these are the doors that. And so these are the doors that would become kind of those public restroom doors when the team rooms are not in use. Then we just have a few views of what the building will look like.
Think I'll just hang out over there.
I think it will be a, a great asset to all athletics on this campus. And here's that view kind of standing, not standing, but kind of in the stadium, looking back across the road towards, towards the new building. Any questions on the building itself?
Questions?
Can we be like the University of Iowa and paint the visitors' room pink?
Yes.
So for clarification, so this will be available for use for all of our sports teams essentially? Is that the hope that, I mean, like cheer can use, is it, is it going to be utilized a, a ton? What's the, the vision for it as far as like, is it all teams, all seasons? Do?
I think it was intended to support the athletic events that are happening in that area for teams that, so, you know, things that are happening at the football and soccer fields, absolutely. Things that are happening at the baseball fields, and then eventually things that are happening at, at the tennis courts as well.
Okay, great. And then are, will we ever use this space in for rental or anything like that?
I don't, more than likely not.
No, okay. All right.
Other questions?
But a nice thing is like, we've never had, if there is a weather event, you have to go back to the high school. So at a track meet in the spring, you know, that's much more common than it is in the fall, you get those spring storms. So those teams could evacuate to that space instead of having to go all the way back to the high school, which is quite a long walk when, when there's thunder and lightning.
I will say, I do like the location because originally, right, when all this started, it was talked of being kind of where the scoreboard is now behind that, and that did not lend itself to having baseball and other sports be able to use that. So it's, it's a great location for everyone, you know.
Functional bathrooms for the public.
Exactly.
If it had ended up back there.
Yes.
It would only be for events at the stadium. Now it, it has an expanded use for other events that are not at, you know, the baseball, that's where the tennis will go, yeah.
Yeah. I know there were some challenges with that site behind, but.
Yes, I will say this was a challenge.
It's okay.
The final placement of this building is much better for a number of reasons.
We are happy, we are happy with the result, but yes.
It's far more cost-effective, right?
Right, and more cost-effective to put it up here, correct?
Yes.
Yes, excellent.
But that's kudos to the archi-, to the architect partially, that you were just analyzing how the space can be, what we need, how the space can be used, and didn't get locked into the initial ideas. That you wait, you know, you, you, you continued to gather information till you could find, well, this would be the best plan. So I do appreciate the fact that what was being talked about for the team's plan, nobody got locked in and said, but this is how we have to do it. You, you and the team were very open to coming up with something that, that shows that patience is the key.
Yeah, we're, we're excited we came to a solution that seems to benefit the district so well.
And when will this set, the spring?
So construction should start on this in the spring to late winter even with the, with the goal of it being, you know, open into summer, early fall.
To be used in the fall, yeah, first of all.
Okay.
That's the goal.
Excellent.
All right.
Does the demolition occur before or after this? Because, I mean, with, with the construction of the, the roadway going in, that's, that's probably, is, is that, is that all happening in the summer as well? Or is it just the building that will happen, or does the whole drive reconfiguration happen?
So the current overall schedule is for this all to be completed, you know, on the same time schedule. So everything that was shown to you. So the demolition needs to happen early in that to, to get the, that portion of the building out of the way, so they can, you know, do the work on the road.
Yeah.
Hope for an early spring.
Exactly. So demolition can, can hap-, you know, is not, is weather dependent?
Yep.
Awesome. Any other questions on the teams rooms? Excellent.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you Mitch.
Thank you.
Okay. That leads us to public participation related to action items on the agenda, and we have none for that. So Strategic Area Governance and Superintendent's update.
Okay, first for the legislative update, I'm going to give you a little bit of information, and then Andrea is going to add her two cents or 10 cents worth. As of yesterday, the governor 95, 95 days late, but the budget was signed. And, you know, at this point, it's been very frustrating for, I think, parents, students, educators across Michigan to know that lawmakers delayed the school budget for months, forcing schools to reopen their doors this year without any funding certainty whatsoever. To keep road funding, to keep the road funding deal alive, that's basically what the whole issue has been. And ultimately, it's diverting $1.35 billion from the school aid fund. That's a $4 million increase over last year's diversion from the school aid fund. So this not only isn't what the public was asking for, because as you all know, there was a survey that was taken that was very clear what taxpayers wanted. And it ultimately sets Michigan's school funding system on a path for disaster in years to come. This is, we are on a slippery slope. Lawmakers need to be honest with Michigan taxpayers about where our education dollars are going. And tax residents send to Lans-, send to Lansing to fund K-12 school classrooms are increasingly being spent elsewhere, elsewhere. And every dollar diverted away from the classroom makes it harder to provide literacy support, mental health services, and teaching talent our students need to succeed. For example, and as I said, Andrea will give you a little bit more information as well. But this budget that was passed, there's a MIPSERS cost shift. So this is the elimination of more than $100 million in state support for K-12 retirement costs, offset forces local districts to absorb this additional pension liability, diverting scarce dollars already from direct instruction and increasing the cost of staffing classrooms. The other thing is the school aid fund is being raided for roads. This is where I think everybody needs to really pay close attention, because as I said, this is a slippery slope. This started happening last year, it's continuing more this year. More than $1.35 billion was diverted from the school aid fund to cover adult priorities and long-term road funding. $400 million more, again, I said, more than last year's diversion. Additionally, though some revenue is temporarily reimbursed through income tax and corporate tax transfers, the gas tax swap trades constitutionally protected K-12 dollars for less secure short-term funding, setting a dangerous precedent. Additionally, public dollars for private programs. The new budget paves the way for privatizing public education funding, directing school aid fund dollars to privatize K-12 schools and scholarship programs. This blurs the constitutional boundary that protects public school funding and shifts resources away from the classrooms those funds were meant to support. Then we go on to the federal shutdown, another blow to stability. The federal government shutdown has compounded this instability. While forward-funded programs such as Title I and IDEA remain temporarily protected, Head Start and school reimbursements are facing risks if this continues. Those have only been granted for this year. Additionally, reports that the Office of Management and Budget might withhold even approved education funds add to the uncertainty for districts already strained by Lansing's delays. Students and districts need stability, not political games from both state and federal leaders. At the state level, we need particular things. We need to treat the July 1st budget deadline as non-negotiable. School boards must adopt budgets on schedule, the state must do the same. We have to end the practice of diverting K-12 dollars to non-education purposes. And we have to restore state responsibility for MIPSERS costs instead of shifting them to classrooms. We have to insist that public funds are only for public schools. And at the federal level, we have to end the shutdown immediately and pass a bipartisan appropriations framework that protects education programs. We have to safeguard Title I, IDEA, Perkins, CTE, and school nutrition programs from disruption and ensure timely funding to states and districts. And across all government levels, we need to rebuild trust through transparency, predictability, and on-time budgeting that puts students first. Every delay and each dollar diverted has tangible consequences: larger class sizes, fewer staff, delayed services, and lost opportunities. Michigan's children cannot be collateral damage in partisan negotiations. I'm urging people to really take a look at what is happening. This really is a slippery slope, and this is year two of where funds are being diverted, where they should be going to public education. And then Andrea will share a little bit more as they're touting big dollars.
Yeah, so I've been trying to go through the numbers as quickly as possible. We have some estimates as far as Lake Orion is concerned, and some of this information is, is what is put out from the state. With the $10,050 per pupil is what they are saying, Lake Orion could see 2.9 million increase from that. What they don't tell you is some of the elimination of the 147 funding. So two in particular, we have 147A1 and 147A4, that those have been cut, that will hit our bottom line, that equals 3.6 million.
What are 147s? Just, just to clarify.
Yeah, so that is the, the ORS Officer Retirement Funding, the actuarial liability. That we have, we have 147C, which we receive the money and we have to pay it out. Excuse me, they've been doing these kind of one-time fundings, which have helped to offset some of the retirement increases. So for example, last year we heard the 147A4 was the 5.75, like that we, we received a benefit for that. They reduced ours. They're taking that away now. That is 3 million. So as you can just hear from that, 3.6 million goes away, but we get 2.9, okay? At the end of the day, that's a decrease in our general fund funding. We are going to see some increases in at-risk, 31AA, Section 41, I should say, at-risk, 31AA is the mental health and safety, Section 41 is the bilingual, 61A and D related to the CTE programs. So we are getting increases there, but those are dollars tied to specific things, right? So we can't use that in the general, in the general terms of everybody's salaries. A couple of other items, the 3% healthcare, there's kind of two parts to that. So we received 147G funding last year, which was to reimburse our employees for their contributions. We were supposed to, or there was talk of being made whole for that, so that our employees would receive their full reimbursement from October 1 of 2024 through September 30th of '25. We did not receive the full amount. We got partial through the 822, 82225 paycheck. So contributions made by employees in September were not reimbursed. And I also want to point out that of the amount that we received, we had to pay FICA on that. Now, in the grand scheme, it, it's not huge dollars, but we're talking 73,000 maximum, that that had to come out of our budget to pay that FICA share. So there's very frustrating pieces. And then the 3% now, districts have to pick up that piece. They tout that they lowered, you know, the, the bar, or they capped it, but now we have to take on this additional cost. So the true dollars that are going to be affected to Lake Orion, we're working on that, and some of that's going to come with the pupil count once we have that all finalized. But those are some frustrating Lake Orion specifics. The other piece I cannot not mention is the state-funded universal free meals and the, I would just have to say, complete chaos that that has caused. Because we, as a district, chose to charge, well, we were really, we didn't choose, I, I don't feel that we had the option, because at that point legislature, legislature hadn't even agreed on, upon a budget. So by doing that, those dollars would have to come out of the general fund. I want to make that clear, because we do have a food service fund, but that specifically says that if a student is not free or reduced, you cannot cover the, that cost for kids that do not qualify. So we would have to include those costs in the general fund, which we did not budget for that. And I sat on a call on Monday, and I specifically asked the question, will we be made whole? Will the budget that was signed by the governor yesterday be retroactive to October 1st? And they could not answer that question. So I can't say whether or not that is a reimbursement that we can make for our employees, because we need to be made whole for that in order to do so. And I, I really push it back on, the state put us in this position. So it's very frustrating, because of course, we care for our children, of course, we want to feed them. But we do have to have that funding, because as you can hear from what I already said, we're having funding taken away. So those are some of my details. There's a lot of documentation. There's some talk of 27L staff bonuses, which there's a lot yet to be determined. There's a Section 164K, which says you have to do certain things in order to get certain funding. So it's going to take some time to get through this. I also want to make mention, if you recall last year, the 147G, right? They talked about that. When did we actually get the money for that? That was in like January or February? So there's a lot of time, once, you know, the budget is actually signed, that the state departments can actually decipher it, and then push it out to, I guess, the local level. So once again, we'll be halfway through the year and probably still getting answers to this budget. So that's my 10 cents.
Thank you. Question, Heather? Yeah, go ahead, we'll start. Bergit, okay.
I just wanted to draw the line from hearing Heidi talk, and she referred to MIPSERS cost shift of 100 million pushing back to locals. And that's what you're addressing with what are, we're being literally underfunded. Boy, this smacks of years, like 10 years ago. I don't have words. Sad and frustrated. And I just want people to understand that, yeah, the budget went through, but this is not exactly good news for us.
Correct.
Heather?
I wanted to ask specifically the 31A funds. So last year, that was lowered, and then they brought it back. I'm just curious where it landed as, in comparison to, as far as amount, percentage, if you have an idea.
Are you referring to 31AA?
31AA.
Okay, so right now, they estimate 259,000 increase to ours. So that doesn't, it was essentially cut in half last year, so this makes up a little bit. So this makes up a little bit.
It up a little bit.
Yeah.
And then regarding the lunches district-wide. So like, so I know there was only, what, a couple of days there?
Two days.
So if families deposited money for their children to use for lunches, are they able to get that money back?
No, well, I shouldn't say no. So that money can be used still, especially at the secondary level. I think you see it used quite a bit with à la carte snack-type items. At the elementary, it can be used to purchase a milk. The thing with the state-funded universal free meals, the child has to take the full meal, you know, all components in order for us to be reimbursed. So if they're only taking pieces, that can be charged. That also, you can move your money in between children. So say you have kids at the high school level, middle and elementary. You could move them all to your high school student. The other important thing to point out is once students graduate, move out of the district, they will get that amount reimbursed to them. They will get that refunded. But that's, it's just kind of the nature. It kind of holds there until they use it. So and we really were, we were careful to say, we don't know. So what's gonna happen? So put in, you know, if you're gonna pay for your student's lunch, put in what you feel is an appropriate amount, you know. We gave no guidance on that because we didn't know. But I think that's a good question.
Are there avenues, if there were families where, and this just so I have an idea. So if there were families that were like, you know, we really weren't planning on that. We could use that money back. There's no avenue by which there's like hardship or anything where if they were needing that, planning on using it. Does that make sense? And now they, now they don't. I just was thinking about that because I'm like, what if, you know? Because there are larger families, families that put in, you know, so like what happens there? If they want, if they don't want their kids to be getting à la carte items and, you know what I mean? I don't know. I'm just curious if there's like rules against it or if that's an option or if that would open up like.
The problem is, is it does open a lot of work.
Right, okay.
So I'm not, I don't want to say, you know, it's a hard no. But as a general rule, like that is, and again, I say, thank you, state, you know, for putting us in this position. The other thing, you know, and I do, I appreciate if people and families have hardships, but we have no idea what next year is going to bring either, right? So there's that piece of it as well.
It goes back to one of the reasons why there was a fight to codify the meals and it never went through. And this is a perfect example of why you do it. Because if you implement something, it's really hard to take it away. And if they'd have put it in law, then they couldn't have taken away. And you would have had the surety that you could continue the program, but they didn't handle it that way, so.
Right.
Correct.
That was the concern from the get, if I remember right. That was like the concern when it first came on.
Correct.
That it was like, if you give it, thou can take it away, sort of, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's unfortunate.
Did, just out of curiosity, did the governor make any changes or did she just sign what hit her desk? Do we know?
I have not heard of any vetoes. And I think that's really all that comes out.
Right.
So I have not heard of anything.
On the line item veto, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't, it could be, but didn't hear.
Right. And that just comes out of, on, I believe it was Thursday, I joined a Zoom call. It was a joint Zoom call, actually, between MASP and MSBO. So one of the line items that MASP in particular was very concerned about, I believe it's with the 31AA money as a safety money, is to get that money. If you have an event in your school, tragic event, to get that money, you have to agree that there will be an independent investigation assigned by the governor. You have no choice. And so MASP and teach, something, I don't want to say it incorrectly, but something about staff not being, like staff almost being forced to participate in the investigation. And MASP was very concerned with that.
That's if we utilize our 31AA money?
Yes.
So was that before too? This is new?
This is new. And there was a lot of talk and concern with that. And they were trying, they were pushing the governor's office at that point to veto that line item.
So then, do we have the local control choice to not? I guess, who makes the decision on whether we are going to accept that 31AA money? Is that just cabinet or does, what does that look like as far as whether you're willing to?
And I'm assuming that's having to, is that to receive any funding for the 31AA? Or have we not dug that far yet?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, those are things that we are reviewing because there's several different stipulations with that. That's just a couple of them. But there are a few more. So again, this document is several, yes. Well, no, but it's several pages that we have to pore over yet to understand each of the areas. So I can't say at this particular point in time.
But that was one of the items that MASP, there was a lot of discussion on the call about. Was that particular? And MASP was pushing very hard against the governor to obviously veto that line item. And it did not happen, so.
Well, and the thought is, you know, just on a few emails that I saw today, was the concern of, well, that more than likely will increase our costs for insurance.
Yes.
So we'll, you know, which we don't know.
Yeah, so that was another thing that surfaced was insurance.
Right, that's, we don't know that yet, but I mean, common sense would kind of tell you that that would need to be done.
But we so desperately need those funds.
Yes.
It is, you know, it's just disappointing overall to hear that part. I didn't realize that was the case.
Well, and it was because it was new. And I had no idea either. The only reason, like I said, it even was surfaced was because MASP was so very concerned with it. And there was a large talk on the Zoom call about it. And to your point, Heather, it takes away local control, right? And everyone in MASP said, we're not against an independent investigation. That's not what we're against. We're against the governor being able to completely control it and basically have say on how it occurs and who does it and the entire situation, so. And to have dollars basically dangled over your heads if you don't do, you know, agree to this. That's just wrong, you know, so.
If you're interested, I could read a couple of the sentences directly from the law. It says, "To receive funding under this section, 31AA, a district must agree to be subject to a comprehensive investigation, must affirmatively agree to waive any privilege that may otherwise protect information from disclosure in the event of a mass casualty event, and must agree to comply with a comprehensive investigation." And then they go into further detail of what that comprehensive investigation is, but including interviewing witnesses and district personnel involved.
And I think the other, another big concern behind that was no one even had any inkling that that was even being discussed until it came out and it was already done. There was never any whisper of that even. So that came out as a shock. And there are several things along the way that these requirements came out as a shock that no one knew anything about.
For a point of clarification, is that the caveat for just the additional, like the 254,000 if we use it or any?
Any of it.
All right.
Right.
Yeah, so we're encouraged to advocate prior to it. And I would encourage you to still communicate with your legislators about, with the impact, impact. What they need to hear is how it impacts us. Because I don't think they get it.
No, no, they do not. But I could not agree more. People need to advocate because, one, just look at how this budget turned out. And Lord knows what's gonna happen next year. So it's very, it's very important that people stay engaged and continue to write their legislators.
They have come back on certain topics and fixed them. So the advocacy thing is important because, you know, there was a line item for the Autism Alliance and everybody was just shocked that it wasn't in there. So sometimes they do come back and correct things like that. And they, if they get enough pressure, then remove those restrictions from this money. Is an easy, not an easy, but it's a vote that you could do. Okay, on that law, we're now gonna just remove those restrictions so everything else stays in place. They can fix these things if they get, if there's pressure. The other thing I was gonna say about this is, this is the, this is one of the best budgeting tricks that you can have as a state. So last year, they kept the per pupil allowance flat and gave us a whole bunch of one-time money. So then the next year, you come in, we've raised the per pupil allowance by $438, but you pulled all the one-time money. So net over the two years, way behind inflation. It's, and when you said, what's gonna happen next year? That's what maybe is, they're gonna go, you know, the trick is one-time money next year. Because then you can pull it, give a smaller per pupil increase. It just shows, I mean, we, it's the legislators and they're elected to represent the people. But is this, as you said, the survey, is this what people wanted? This doesn't, this did not, in no way prioritize schools. This was all about several hundred million for roads and getting roads, you know, confirmed long-term. But the priority of educating students was pretty clear that not many people in Lansing had the priority of educating. And what I'll say is K-12 students, because one of the big diversions is, let's use school aid money because universities and community colleges are schools. No, this money was originally intended to be K-12. And that's where, you used the term elsewhere, and that's a big elsewhere. It's still for education, but you're diluting the pool that goes to K-12. If you take those out, you bring that over a billion dollars back to K-12, that means we're getting hundreds of dollars more per pupil that aren't being diverted to universities and community colleges. So they can, oh, we're doing wonderful things there and we didn't, we took out all the cuts that the state universities were facing because you cut it from what should have come to K-12 education. And we, the headlines that they're trying to spin just aren't, aren't the case. This wasn't good for education, for K-12 education.
Thank you. Any other, go ahead.
Any other comments?
Any other comments on the budget? I do not believe so.
One more.
Okay, Heather.
This went down my list. Sorry. Okay, so it's, what does that look like for us? I'm trying to remind myself what the question was. 3% contribution reimbursement. So what does that look like in brass tax numbers as far as what hit we will take?
I need to look at that.
Still look, okay.
Yeah, that's to come.
All righty, thanks. That's it.
Okay. Yeah, we're not even, it's what, 24 hours?
Right.
Yeah.
To get the actual, yeah.
I mean, I can tell you, you know, what we received last year was about 950,000. And we weren't able to reimburse the full thing, so maybe a million too.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's just quick.
All right. Well, we'll get into other things. Regarding the 2018 bond update, the aux gym continues to progress nicely. Concrete is going in this week. Paving is going in next week. The wood floor is the first or second week in November with a completion at the end of December. So that will be very exciting. I already told you last time, Paint Creek is all set. And so that is where we're at with 2018 projects. And then the ones starting in the spring, you saw the team room today. And so we'll be, you know, doing all of that work starting in the spring. And then regarding the 2025 bond proposal, we're continuing to get out to provide information. Tomorrow, we'll be at the HOA community event at the township. This next weekend, starting on Sunday, is the homecoming parade. So we will be there and attending activities throughout the week, again, to make sure that people have the information and if they have any questions that we can answer. And then soon on the website, we'll be adding a video that is essentially the bond information that I shared in the September 25 meeting so that everybody will be able to have all of that information and see that on the website as well. So that's all I have.
Any bond questions? Okay. Thank you, Heidi. And with that, we'll move on to student treatment with Drew.
All right, thank you. Few updates this evening. I did want to start with some updates from the special ed department. Sarah has recently completed, she's met with all principals in all buildings. She's done a phenomenal job. She's actually out presenting at a national conference right now. So we've been very lucky with her and she's done a great job with the department. That has spilled over into conversations we've been having in leadership of moving into really refining and talking about key components when we go into classrooms to look at solid instruction across the boards. So the dialogue that our departments are having together has been really strong. So always wanted to give an update there of some of the things that we're talking about as a department. We recently, last week, had our English learner family night. Liz Slusher and her team did a phenomenal job. It was very well-attended, very positive feedback from families. So that's one of the areas they try really hard to build the connections with our families and just provide dialogue, resources, opportunities for different ways to get involved in the community. So it was very well-received. At our last board meeting, I mentioned we were going to begin a partnership with Barnes &amp; Noble for some math nights for our elementary buildings. Those actually started this week. We had one last night for Paint Creek and then one tomorrow for Carpenter. And we had staff that have come out and great experience, a lot of families that attended and a chance to get out with Barnes &amp; Noble and that partnership. So I'm really excited for that. And then the last update I had, I did want to clarify one of the items later on the consent agenda, just as something we're seeing a little bit more of in relation to field trips. We are running into a little bit more, it's kind of the catch-22. We have a lot of great opportunities for our kids specific to some of our organizations and competitions that we see. What is happening, however, is we're trying to navigate, we have the requests. Our staff and our teams are putting the requests in within the window for overnight and out-of-state approval, that timeline. However, some of the organizations we're finding aren't giving the final details until we get closer to that. So I know this last one that came through had a lot of TBDs, which is not how we normally like to do that. And I, but one of the things that I did want to clarify is that with these organizations, when it comes specific to the number of students who are attending, that is often driven by some of the competitions and who qualifies. But in relation specific to costs, one of the things that we have never wanted to do is exclude students from the opportunity to participate based upon potential or unknown costs. So we always, whether it's working through the organizations, our office, different things, we kind of term it as scholarships, but making sure we have opportunities. If kids qualify, but they don't know the cost until the 11th hour, we always make sure that that's not a factor for them to participate. So we are, in our office, you know, Mary Beth and I have had some conversations this week and really it's specifically mostly to the high school. So working with Amy and Dan and that team to figure out, you know, how can we make this a little bit clearer so that I'm not bringing forward to you a lot of TBD instances there? So I did just want to clarify that as I know that was one, we haven't had one in a little bit and this one was a little bit broader on this one this evening. So those were all the updates I had.
Questions for Drew.
No, I'll say that's a fair statement, is the TBD on the student count, the TBD on the cost. But the key is that, is I think we all feel that these activities are out there for all students and they can't, we don't want a student to ever, to not choose to not participate in something for a fear of a cost of participating. We put all of these activities out for all students to engage in and then obviously they have to qualify for the two that have here to get to the state competition or get to a national competition. But if they work hard, the opportunity is there. And that was the key that I think we all need to hear and make sure that we're all on the same page, that that's what we want to have happen for our students.
Absolutely.
Heather.
What is the, what does the timeline look like as far as submission before they have? Like, when do they have to have it in? What does that look like behind the scenes? Just curious.
It varies really when it comes to the overnight. It, it varies, really when it comes to the overnight and out-of-state field trips, that's the larger window. And that's mostly, we typically look at about, I think it's 60 to 90 days out just for approval planning purposes, making sure we have everything lined up. The other piece, obviously international and those trips, we have had a couple submissions. We'll be bringing, our deadline internally for those is October 1st so that we can review them and then bring them to the board for potential approval. Usually the last meeting in October 1st in November. And then that is for a year and a half forward. So the international ones obviously are, are quite extensive, so.
Thank you.
I do have the form here, Drew, and it's out-of-state is 60 days, in-state 30.
Couldn't reme- I knew the 60, I, yep, hadn't looked at it today, so.
And then the international is the October, the year prior.
Yes, thank you.
Those, just to give history on some of that, those were revised over the years to develop a process. So it was in a more timely manner. So there was a time when sometimes we would get things snuck in kind of at the last minute. It was a little unnerving thinking that things were coming together so quickly. And now there's a great process in place for the district to follow.
And it definitely helps when we're looking at the, going back to the opportunities we have for our kids are great, but to that exact point of when we're approving and sending students to travel across the country now internationally, just the processes we have in place really are helpful to know, we, we've got all of our ducks in a row before we're, we're sending everyone out.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, human resources and Adam.
Thank you, Danielle. I'd like to recommend for hire the certified staff member and administrator as listed in your board packet. Also, just two quick HR updates. This past Wednesday, October 1st, was our fall student count day. So I'll be working on an enrollment presentation based on our fall headcount for you in the coming meetings. And this coming Monday, we're happy to be hosting our annual flu shot clinic at the high school on October 13th. And that is all from HR.
Thank you. And then we also have the super, superintendent evaluation committee report and Jake is going to handle that for us.
Sure. So on Tuesday, September 30th, the superintendent evaluation committee met with Heidi for what we call an informal check-in. So while she had prepared some things against, you know, eh, eh, you know, in the evaluation tool, we really tried to make that more of a high-level view, you know, how, how was it going? So some of the things we checked in on, and, and what made it easy is we overall felt, you know, things are going well, so that allowed us to look at these things. We didn't have to dive down into details, why aren't you doing this or why aren't you doing that? We were able to look at some bigger things. The goals that we had, some of them were related to the strategic plan. And we got, we get those, those updates as a whole board. One of the things we talked about was that everything was under, all of the things we were talking about was balanced budget. So what we just talked about, last year's budget and th- this current school year's budget, for any of these programming things we're doing, balanced budget, we'll get in the finance committee report. It, eh, we passed a balanced budget last year. The auditors are still going through it, but we were able to achieve a surplus in last year's budget. So the overriding goal for Heidi, balanced budget was, is in progress for this year, met for last year. And then we also wanted to encourage her on the continuation of professional growth. And she's attended several different trainings and, and different things and developing relationships with other superintendents in the area and across the state. And we even encouraged her to say that now she's in her second year and the lifespan of a superintendent is often short. But with her background in teaching and learning to reach out to other new superintendents across the state, and I know she's developed a, a relationship with, with Oxford superintendent to say, hey, you know, we're in this together, let's, you know, figure, figure out these new things. So that was the key. And then we also talked a little bit about the, our future need for strategic planning. We're in year four of our strategic plan. Next fall, we'll be in year five. And the district needs to plan i- in advance. So we can't just at the end of year five say, hey, let's start a strategic plan for next fall. So we agreed that that would be something that the entire board would need to talk about more in the new year to see what does that timeline look for going through '26 into '27 so that we don't hit June of '27 and year five is done? Because that's sort of what happened with our old strategic plan. It just, it, it lingered and we have a very good strategic plan now. But even if the new one comes back very similar, we want to be intentional. And I always say it's the scientific method. The last, the last step is reevaluate your hypothesis. So if we come back with a very similar strategic plan, that's fine. That's confirming that we were on the right direction. So that was something we discussed about and like I say, we'll come back to the full board. And then we got onto a discussion about, about safety. And it was just very interesting to hear Heidi's perspectives of that safety is the overarching goal. Like nothing else we can do in education unless safety is in place. And that's just what, what motivated her and, and it was just interesting to hear some of her perspectives and what she's doing for professional learning and pushing herself to continue to look at safety in different ways.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions?
Or any comments, Heidi, about it?
She's good. And then just as a reminder, I believe our special meeting is October 29th to start the formal superintendent evaluation process. So that'll be coming, but just a reminder on that, so. Thank you. And then finance and operations, Andrea.
Thank you. I actually have nothing more since I tag teamed there with Heidi, so.
Okay. Well, that's going to move us through the finance committee report and also back to Jake.
Which let me find my finance committee minutes for just a second. Yeah, so we, the finance committee met immediately prior to the last board meeting on Wednesday, September 24th at 5:00 PM. We discussed the preliminary audit results. The audit is ongoing and they will bring us a full report, likely the first meeting of November. But there was nothing that had been seen so far that caught, was any cause for concern. The audit was running pretty well. We talked about the fiscal year '26 and at that point in time, we didn't, we don't have a budget. So everything that we, i- i- if they come in with the assum- eh, with, the state came in with the assumptions, but you can't really review your current year budget when you don't know how much money you're, you're going to get. But we looked over the sinking fund. They create a two-year sinking fund view and it's, it's interesting to see that, and it's good to see that there was a large portion in the '26, '27 year sinking fund that's, that's, well, lack of a better term, uncommitted. Because we just don't know what those emergency repairs and needs are going to be. So one of the things as, as they go, is, as they go through the office, and she said a lot of, you know, talks with Wes and operations about what they need. But it was good to see, you know, what, how that's trending over the next two years, what we're doing with the sinking fund. And then we talked about property, you know, that publicly, like, the, the, the Clarkston Road property are, not the Clarkston Road, but the Carpenter School property is closing and the process of us assuming that building is, is going on. And then quite frankly, we talked about the Pine Tree property, which, which has not been posted for sale. We have not received a formal offer on it. But it is deemed as excess capacity would be the word that I would use, that, that our enrollment projections do not project that that building, which was originally constructed as an elementary school building, will be needed to, you know, house students. So it is likely that they will come to us with a recommendation to sell Pine Tree, but there's nothing formal, nothing, nothing out there contrary to.
What's out there?
Yeah, what's out there.
There you go.
Yes.
Any questions on the finance committee? Okay, thank you again, Jake. With that, that will bring us to our action items. May please have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the September bills in the amount of $7,735,563.86. Also approved minutes from the September 24th regular, the September 24th finance committee and the September 30th, 2025 superintendent evaluation committee meetings. Also approving out-of-state and overnight field trip requests. Number one, for LOHS FCC LA to a location in Michigan yet to be determined on February 23rd through 25th of 2026. Also for LOHS FCC LA to Washington DC on July 6th through 10th of 2026.
Thank you, Burgett. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. May please have a motion to approve certified new hire.
I move to approve a certified new hire as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you for all the support. Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And congratulations to our newest teacher and welcome home again. Last item, may please have a motion to approve the district CFE supervisor.
I move to approve appointing Chad Chappell, Chapel? Chapel as the district CFE supervisor as recommended.
Thank you, Burgett. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you for the support. Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries and welcome to Chad. Very excited to have you. Okay, that takes care of our, excuse me, our action items. That takes us to the public participation for other non-action item topics and we do have two people signed up. So, good evening. Welcome to Lake Orion Community Schools Board of Education meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the board for the purpose of conducting school district business and is not meant to be considered a public community meeting. All individuals wishing to address the board were required to sign the public participation sheet prior to the start of the meeting. When addressing the board, please state your name so we may accurately record it in the minutes. And if you're willing to do so, also share your relationship to the district. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a school board member or school district employee, which are totally unrelated to the manner in which the member or employee performs his or her duties. If the comments constitute a complaint, the employee must be notified in advance and has the right to request a closed meeting. An individual's time is limited to five minutes. While you are at the podium, please direct all comments toward the Board of Education. If you are unable to complete your thoughts within five, the five-minute timeframe, we are welcome to submit your comments in writing. And lastly, please note that it's, it is not the board's policy to take, or it is not the board's policy to respond during the meetings, but we do take all comments under consideration. And the board will also refrain from correcting any inaccuracies presented in public comments. So with that, Mr. Anthony Taramina.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Anthony Taramina, former Lake Orion alum, class of 2006 alum, also current Scripps Middle School lunch monitor, staff associate. I wanted to talk today about, can you guys hear me? Okay. I want to talk to you guys tonight about, and I'll be brief, I promise. I want to talk about the, one of my questions I want to ask was about community service. When I was in school, we were required to have 40 hours of community service. Recently, I've heard that Lake Orion is now doing 20 hours of community service. And I kind of think that might have been a policy that was implemented during COVID, during that time. But now we're, we're kind of past COVID. And I would ask, if possible, I mean, you don't have to answer anything like that, but I would ask if, if it's possible to return it back to 40 hours in order to, for students to graduate. Yeah, I talked about the importance of giving back to the community. I've been able to give hours to several students. One example is my neighbor. My mother's not exactly well, so my neighbor has taken time to help with doing lawn and basically, because my brother and I are not often home, sleep for athletic events, as some of you guys have may seen. But the reason why I ask for the return to 40 hours is the importance of giving back to the community. And I think that there's a lot that take giving back into, or for granted. You know, I was somebody that had over a thousand hours of service during my time in Lake Orion. Obviously, understanding the importance of giving back has always been important. I've had several students that have went to Scripps in the past, often would give back to me in terms of like helping me in certain situations, like certain games or certain things like that. And also, I wanted to ask for the hours. I think that several, I, I, I know that we have, you want to diversify and explore other community service people to sign. What I think of too is like, there's, why can't one person just sign off on all of the students' hours? I think that that's something that, that we should definitely take a look at. Overall, I think just the most important thing is, eh, with the community services, just asking to return to 40 hours. Because we're, we're, we've moved on from COVID. I think students would benefit from, you know, giving back to the community, just like I've given back for several years. And I ask that, I definitely think that students would benefit if we returned from 20 hours to 40 hours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anthony. And next, we have Mr. Scott Gabriel.
Incredibly happy to be able to walk up here. Scott Gabriel, 941 Joslin. My connection to the schools is, well, a number of things. We have international students that my wife and I host. We, I volunteer for the student senior interviews and I happen to work with the Miss Baguette on the blessings of the backpack. Well, come January, when I can lift things. So first off, thank you. Thank you for doing this. It's a thankless job. Just thank God you're not in charge of garbage. And it all begins with taking care of the kids. You guys are taking care of the financials. That's your job. I got nothing to say about that. You got to take care of the buildings. But taking care of the kids is, is where it starts. And just want to give some personal examples. I work at one of the local farms. We do hay rides, field trips, things like that. Today, we had a group from one of the Lake Orion elementaries. By far amongst the 40 different schools that we have at this place, they're the best behaved, most organized, polite and engaged. I mean, you know, besides squirting each other with the milk, but very engaged. I mean, so kudos to the elementary leadership and organizing them. They're on time, they show up, they know what they're doing and the kids are asking great questions. Just compliments to the, to all that. And then secondary, as I said, I have international students. To get the perspective of people from Vietnam, Japan, Czechoslovakia, all these different countries, they are all, without exception, amazed by the opportunities at the Lake Orion High School. Not just the sports events, which is great, that's Americana, that's what they expect, but all the things, the theater, the art, the clubs, the support, the support of the teachers and the coaches that are there after hours, before hours, swim team, God, God love you, 5:30 in the morning. It is amazing. It is even amazing to students who have gone to other schools and now have transferred to here. So don't, don't lose sight that we do an excellent job as compared to a lot of places. And I'm talking worldwide. And then lastly, and I'll throw a challenge at you guys. In a week and a half, we have student interviews through our personal finance classes. Every one of you needs to do that. And the reason I said it is it's going to give you great perspective to see where our students end up. Yeah, we got the 4.4s and they're going to John Hopkins. We know that guy. But we have the 1.7 who got this welding certificate. And he's already rebuilt two tractors. And he's just engaged, or she is just engaged on doing this. And our school serves them. It doesn't matter their career path or where they're ending up, or their social situation, or where they're from, if it's school of choice or not. Our system from beginning to end really serves every single one of our students. I mean, yeah, it's easy to serve honor roll students. That's easy. That's a given. But we really take care of all the students. I mean, and you've got to come and see this program. If, if you doubt what you're doing and you're getting beat down by the internet, come to these. You've got to come to these and see what's going on. Because it'll give you a great perspective. It'll give you a great morale boost and you'll see what you're, what you're here for. And then lastly, as an idea, is part of the, I don't know, maybe personal finance, maybe something. One of the requirements, I believe, in accordance to the service hours, is each student should have to attend one governmental meeting. This one, planning commission, I don't care. They've got to go to one governmental meeting so they can understand how we're governed. Because that's where it's going to start. Because you guys know, half the parents don't know how this works. So I would maybe stick that in there. It's a two-hour commitment and maybe it'll help. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. That concludes our public participation and recap and next steps. Heidi.
We will follow up with Anthony regarding his questions.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Closing comments, Andrea.
Just welcome to Chad and Ashley. Congratulations to Matthew Smith. Thank you to Mitch. It's always great seeing him because we see him on Zoom so much. But the work that they do, they are definitely experts in their field. So thank him for, for being here and what nice weather we've had, especially for the fund runs. So that's exciting and have a great night.
Adam.
Yep. Big welcome to Ashley and Chad. Excited to have both in Lake Orion and their roles. Congratulations to Matt Smith. And also looking forward to the parade on Sunday and homecoming week and just the community excitement that all those festivities bring. So very excited for that.
Thank you, Drew.
All right, yep, to Echo, welcome Chad and Ashley back to the Dragon family. And congrats to Matt. It's a huge honor. As Scott mentioned, the senior interviews, I highly urge those are, as many of you have sat in on, just one of the coolest things that we have. So looking forward to those and getting ready to celebrate homecoming here starting this Sunday. So have a great night.
Thank you, Heidi.
All right, congratulations to our new Dragons and congratulations to Matt Smith. And also you could please let Julie know if you're planning to attend the parade. That would be great. And lots of activities next week, so we're all excited for that. And I also want to thank Scott for the positive comments. And fortunately, we have several staff, more staff than what we typically do in the meeting. And it's great that they're able to hear that because I don't think they hear it enough. So thank you.
All right, that's it. Thank you. And keeping the tradition of spicing her up, we're going to have Burgett start us off.
Fun.
I know.
All right. Well, thanks for a great meeting and the presentation was great. And I want to thank our, our public commenters this evening was wonderful. And last time Scott probably did public comment, that's when he got, we got you to volunteer for Blessings in a Backpack. So thanks for all of that and we look forward to you healing. And so speaking of that Blessings in a Backpack, we had our first pack of the year. And so we're, look forward to serving our students again for another school year. I do want to encourage people to contact your legislators and let them know the impact that's having on Lake Orion schools. That is really important. And I also want to piggyback on Scott saying about the senior exit interviews. And not just for my colleagues up here, but that's open to the public. I think everyone should see what, what awesome high schoolers we have. That's all I got. Go Dragons.
Excellent.
I know, I'm spicing, I am spicing it up.
Just thank you very much to the presenters, to the people that came tonight and shared your thoughts with us. Appreciate that always to hear from the community. Andrea, thank you for digging into the legislation, letting us know what that means for Orion in dollar and cents. I look forward to getting that report from you so we really know what we have to work with. Disappointing, it sounds like right now from what your initial report out is. But that further information will really help us make decisions. So thank you for your hard work trying to decipher that. And good luck, everyone, this week with the homecoming festivities. Looking forward to that. So go Dragons.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, yeah, welcome to the new Dragons. You know, just piggybacking on something that Scott said about how Lake Orion stands apart and I think does things with excellence. I mean, even just us as a board and our efforts to just constantly be learning. I mean, I learned a lot just even in this meeting alone. So I just think it's really great and something to be proud of. So go Dragons.
Thank you. Jeff.
Well, thank you to our public participants. We have a lot of staff members in the audience tonight from Scripps and LOHS, including a couple of my son's teachers. I'm sure right now he's at home working hard on ELE and social studies. Either that or Roblox. I'm not sure. It's 50/50. Fall break, we just came off a fall break. Sounds like it was a big hit. I was getting a lot of positive feedback from people. And I know, I know it was liked at my house and it's nice. It's such a long stretch traditionally that started the year all the way to Thanksgiving break. So that was a nice little, nice little long weekend. Lamp of Learning, first Lamp of Learning ceremony last week and it was so nice. All this recognizing the hardworking students, so many hardworking students and seeing their proud families and teachers in the audience was, was a really special event. And I enjoyed it and I'm looking forward to next week. And finally, can't wait for all the homecoming festivities and the, and the parade. I'm, I'm starting some fitness walking now so I can prepare for the route. It's difficult as a retiree, you don't walk as much.
Don't you walk at the mall?
Thank you.
I do, I do some mall walking, but it's controlled conditions.
Thank you, Jeff.
The mall?
Scott.
I think everybody hit on everything I was going to say. It is refreshing. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Scott, for, you know, bringing forth positive things. And, you know, because that is probably why we're all here is to see those results, realizing that sometimes it's hard to get to those results. But it was great that, that the people were able to hear those things. So thank you.
Jake.
Yeah, I want to thank our public speakers as well, but the, the theme of volunteering and they are two of the more incredible volunteers we have in our community there and involved in so many things. And it just, it just shows that it takes that personal involvement to make things happen. And they're two shining examples of that. I want to congratulate the girls' flag football team that they were, they were amazing. And, and that was sort of sad when I saw they're doing their green versus white game tonight. Because I love to get out to see them, you know, play against each other, which would have been quite possibly the best competition they faced all year. Because, but again, the, the other side is the coaches. And got to talk to them and was kids that had, that had played flag football when they were little, kids who didn't know anything, like what's a down? Why, why, why does it go back to being for down? And they took all of these different skill sets. And I think that's the key that we see in, in all of the extracurriculars we offer, that, that you can come at, at different levels. And it's just exciting that, that that was another opportunity that we were able to provide for our students. It's, it's just great that years ago, Chris Bell told me, he's like, when he was still an assistant principal and the head football coach, it was, we want every student to be here from 2:30 to 5 o'clock, engaged in some form of school activity. Because that's the best way for them to spend their afternoons, not, you know, going off somewhere else. So that's the cool thing is that, is if nothing else, that, that gave those 40 girls another way to be engaged, doing positive activities, building teamwork skills. So it's just, it's just really cool and I, and I want to congratulate them.
I know, right? Thank you. Yes, of course, thank you, everyone, the teachers for teaching a full day and then hanging out until 8 o'clock with us. We appreciate that. Thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Thank you to Mitch from GMB. I know he travels quite a distance to come and be here with us in person. And that's always appreciated, you know, his, the work he does, you know, is, it's quite incredible. And we appreciate that. And looking forward to homecoming week. And with that, we are adjourned.